So, the two items I have tonight. The first one is the 24-25 school calendar. We are a little later than normal. We're trying to work some things out. And I think we're at a good point. And so, we're presenting the calendar tonight for approval on the 19th. This one does have a starting date of May 11th, and we have in the past couple of years. It starts on August 26th. The last day of school would be June 5th. We also have graduation. And then, the rest of the calendar follows pretty much sequentially what we have done this year as far as days off, in-service days, professional learning for our staff as well. And then, it also does follow the same model as far as the flexible instructional days or the virtual days, where we would utilize the first five there. And then, traditional snow makeups, if you go beyond five, would be April 14th, 15th, and 6th. And so, heading at this point, hopefully they don't jinx us. We have used three virtual days so far this year. So, that does mean that we will not need to utilize any of the Easter break or spring break this year for any traditional makeup days. Any questions on the calendar or thoughts or... I will say, it was nice. We'll get out in May this year. And, you know, starting that week a little bit later, unfortunately, if we started on the 21st as we have done in the past, we would then be bringing everybody back on May 2nd. So, it would be, you'd come back for one day in June. So, or June 2nd, sorry. So, the June 26th does give us, it gives us a little wiggle of loss over the construction part.
If you use more of the flex days or snow days, probably just go to school the first three days and use the break. Then you could end up in May.
We could look at that as well.
Huh? I think we should table it down. Or not, we're not voting on it.
No, we're not voting on it.
That's just my opinion. I like when we can get out in May. I think June's a waste of time.
The only, the only thing I will say is that, what that does is, this year, if we went to 14th, 15th, 16th, it would still bring us back June 2nd. You're just moving that 5th up three days.
We can forego it. How close is the line?
You're not getting anything out of that. That's nine, 900 hours. Did they pass 900 hour thing?
They did.
We can forego the last day of school, but June 2nd. Because you'll have your 900 hours in May.
We do have 100, we have 181 days, so yes. There might be some contractual things as far as language wise.
We may go.
We might have to figure out.
That says eyes are bigger right there.
That's, that's the thing. One potential kind of thing. The days over hours, the days doesn't matter.
We'd have an hour, too. We'd be over an hour. I don't know. I just, it's my opinion though, once you're in June. I've, I've checked out home before that, but I know almost everybody else checks out by June.
Is he trying to say less for a little?
Problem is, if it flurries six different days, next month.
Flurries your prediction. You messed up.
I think my calls were spot on this year, thank you. And flex, fit days are available through the 12th.
Yes.
Hey, can you only use five of those?
So, the way the fit works is, it gives flexibility to use the five. You have to put a plan. But with the state changing to the 180 or 900 hour, it does open things up a lot more. So, you know, we could, as long as we meet the 900 hours, we could say, well, we're going to do virtual days beyond the five if we wanted to.
Do you, do we have to do flex days? Like, say you have a day, January 4th, we have a snow day. And we could actually use Martin Luther King Day then as a stay at school instead of a, could they have an actual snow day and then make, have a makeup day then?
We could.
Do you, do you have the flexibility to go back and forth? Or do you gotta just use flex days the first five days that we have all?
We can do, we can use however we want. One year, we did it where we did traditional snow days and then the flex days. We've done, we've done it this way differently this year.
Personally, I think it's nice, you know, once a while, a kid has a snow day, they actually have a snow day, they enjoy it. So, I know, at least when I was a kid, we, that's all we did. We never came in. We were out all the time. I know for the last flexible day, I was impressed with the amount of work that the student, or at least my students had compared to the first one.
One of the things that we talked about was, right now, the way the elementary is scheduled is, we did a live session in the morning and a live session in the afternoon. ELA would be in the morning, ELA in the afternoon. We were kind of throwing the idea out as, would it make sense more to do both live sessions in the morning? So, that essentially would be kind of like a half day. And then, you would have the afternoon or late morning into the afternoon to then go outside. So, school in the morning, but it's snowing and, and then, once it stops or lightens up or keeps going, you would have the afternoon to, to play outside. I mean, there is, the, the other piece, the flexibility also gives you is, because there's no longer that 180-day criteria, we could say, if school closes, it's closed. And you don't make that day up. So, there is a lot of flexibility. The one thing that does tie hands a little bit is, there is contractual language in our collective bargaining agreement that does say a certain number of days for students, staff.
Are they gonna argue if they have one less day at ECU?
I don't know. That might, that could be something we'll approach, we can approach.
Spokesperson says no. I can't see you fighting this.
Well, what, what I could do is, I can draft a calendar if you want, that shows May 30th as the last day. It would be cutting the first three days off Easter.
I don't want to create an issue if nobody else is gonna vote for me. That's my opinion, but that's always my opinion, every year since I've been on the board for 22 years. So, I've only voted for probably two calendars in 22 years, so it's...
One of the last.
I'm gonna, so I'm gonna go no anyhow. Regardless, I mean, the lesson is that on May 30th, I'll probably go yes.
How much is that short of Easter break?
Thursday, Friday, Monday.
It's still five days. Yeah, so Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Monday. Like we used to have, we didn't have trappers. That's what I would have. So, a lot of times, we didn't have Thursday or Monday, we only had Friday. We had Sunday, but we didn't have virtual, and I didn't have computers. I guess I'm dating myself.
We'll shrink it till after Labor Day while we're at it. I mean, I don't, I could create a couple of different options. And, you know, it's not...
And the other thing is, how does it affect BCTC?
So, BCTC has not put out their calendar yet. Did they put up there?
No, they're actually waiting for our calendars to produce theirs.
They have tentatively, like, their Easter break is, would be the 15th through the 21st.
So, they would have school Monday.
They, yeah.
But they have snow wake-up days, they take Tuesday, Wednesday, I think, too. Because they can't, they can't do a lot of virtual, they can't do the virtual days that we have.
So, they, they do virtual. If the majority of sending districts are virtual, they go virtual. So, they had one day that they did a traditional closure because the majority did, the majority did, I think it was, there was a couple of schools that were not quite set up at that point, and so, they had to close. But then, the other two, BCTC did their virtuals. BCTC's proposed start date is the 21st. So, they would be starting about three days ahead of us. They do end May 30th. So, our last, our kids would miss, they would still be able to attend. We'd still provide transportation on the 21st, 22nd, or 23rd, if they wanted to, if they don't require it. But then, the 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th, they would not have school.
Well, one of, one of the things against us starting that early this year is the building project.
And we, we could technically start that early. It just, the thought was, it might be helpful to have a couple extra days. But that's not to say we couldn't do that. I mean, I could, I could draw up a calendar that shows the 21st, and then, what three days ahead of Easter looks like. You're probably then more along the lines of right after Memorial Day.
We have almost, does high school be an air conditioner to start it this year?
Well, they will, they'll have air conditioning because we have those units, but it won't be Easter days.
Do you want to start even earlier this year? On the 1st? That's what we...
The last couple of years, we did starting that, that week. Like, this year, we would have started that. We start on the 22nd this year.
That only gives families two weeks of August to go on vacation.
This, this is the longest summer we'll have because it's done in May, and then for the last August.
I always think...
It does shift. It, it shifts like you, we cut into August, but you get full of you. It's a different, water's colder then. I don't, this is, all I have to do is go in and, and a spreadsheet and make some changes.
If you work something out, out that ends May 30th, I'm fine with it. But if everybody else is fine with this one, then move it on and out a little bit.
Even make, even make it work, the starting the 26th, which is still things earlier, and then May 30th. We've got more support.
How would other schools do it when they start after Labor Day?
I don't know that there's many that start after Labor Day anymore. I think Mike is the only one. But yeah, I'll go back and kind of see what we have to do if we... The only other item I have tonight is the recommendation to move forward with the before and after school. I did email out the handbook that is provided, the kind of the, there's not a formal training module or a training document, but there is a handbook that kind of governs their conduct, what they're supposed to do and not. We, Lindsey and Andrew and I reviewed it. We didn't find anything alarming. It was pretty standard. They did send that out. I don't know if you were able to look through that. But you'll see later on in the agenda, there is a motion to authorize us to move forward with that.
Basically, more guidelines for their personnel with their teaching, but they refer to required, I'm sure that you go, I can go to those websites, you ask them what they want.
Evan, Mary, Paul.
Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items only?
Mr. Hetrick.
Mr. Hetrick.
Said, "Mr. Hetrick, you haven't even had..."
Okay. All right, moving on to finance. Mr. Het.
Uh, hey, we're gonna approve donating a stipend for, for treasure or $500. Can the board secretary for $500 be donated as the board director's scholarship award?
Palmer, second.
I think that's next. That's the next, sorry. And then, the next one draws to the next one. B, we're gonna approve the 24-25 Marshall County Career Technology Center operating budget as presented to the board.
And you guys just got that, we just got that today. I just gave it to you. It's a, it's a difference of like $2,800, regular ed and special ed. So, it's really no, not much of a change. I'll send you the summary out.
Do we have the same number of kids going or more or less?
Yeah, it's, it's almost exactly the same. We have, last year, we had 56 regular ed average, pre-year average, 56. This year's 57. And last year, the special ed, pre-year average was seven, and this year, eight. So, that's just basically one more kid. The difference, total difference, 2845, 2,845. The total budget is 571,000.
And year after year, we continue to be a school district that sends the, the most kids' percentage of the population, or it's usually first or second. There's usually like cuts down, Tulpie, flop back and forth.
No, it's, it's very good that we have a lot of kids going there. I mean, they come out with a, a goal in mind and where they're headed, and I get to see a lot of those kids work, I work with a lot of them kids, and they, they seem to have more of a goal than some of our regular ed kids sometimes. They're very, have a plan in place, I should say. What they can learn down there, from writing in the industry, a lot of cases.
All right, we're gonna see, approve the 22, 23 school year, early company incorporated order that presented, which will be the March 19th thing, I thought. Hopefully, she'll be here. Yep.
All right, moving on to personnel. Mr. Palmer.
These are all voting on the night, and they're highlighted.
Yep.
5A, I'm going to recruit the following staff employment as listed there.
Excellent.
Any comments? Roll call.
Hetrick.
Yes.
Byler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
5B, I'm going to recruit the following next curricular employment as listed there.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Byler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Hetrick.
Yes.
Byler.
Yes.
Moving on to seventh, policy. Mr. Hetrick.
Give the first reading with intent to give second reading and final approval on the April 16th, going forward to the following policies as listed.
Excellent.
The only thing I'll note is, on these policies, they're just revisions that, as we went through and revised it, wording has been updated since when we, and I'll give you an example, like, policy 200, the enrollment of students, it includes some language on military, so...
So, the changes are in?
Right, yeah.
7B, retire the following policies as listed.
And those are just policies that have either been absorbed by other policies or like the 4 and 5 hundreds. What's happening is, there used to be a 300, a 400, a 500. One was professional employees, one was administrative, and one was classified or support. They've now consolidated everything down to just 300s, and it's just employee. So, there's no longer 400s and 500s. So, that's why there's a lot of retirement there.
All right, moving on to items for board of action. Mrs. Resmow.
This is in bold, so we can't move it. We approve the authorization for the administration to pursue an before and after school program, we can help with this program.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Coffin.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Hetrick.
Yes.
Byler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
All right, administrative reports. Mr. Hetrick.
Good evening, everyone again. For some time now, we've been building our school culture and climate at the high school. Build that capacity within our staff, within our teachers, with the expectation that that positive environment trickles down to our students. And we've been seeing it throughout our walkthroughs, our observations, lunch shifts in the hallways. But Friday mini-thon was something special. I had to pause the event and acknowledge the students for what they were doing here. 150 students came out from mini-thon. Packing teenagers into a building that's under construction for 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM sometimes doesn't sound like the best idea. It went off without an absolute issue. Our kids, from all walks of life, different family backgrounds, all of us come together for a common goal. They were working together, they were playing together. Not one issue of a student saying a negative thing about one another. It was thoroughly, thoroughly impressive to see. To see our teachers come out, volunteer their time to help our kids. I'm so proud of the culture and climate that we're creating at the high school, and it's something that, you know, we've been working on, and it's just, it's impressive to see. And the work's not over, it's one of those things that the work doesn't stop. So, you continue to work on and create the best environment possible for our kids, and create this Tulpie family and make it the best we can. I'd like to shout out Amanda Minnick and Ann Baldizo, who nominated for the Loretta Woods Award. It's an award that goes around each school, each school district in the county. This year, it's landed on Tulpie, and me nominated those two individuals. Amanda Minnick has really stepped up this year with the amount of PSL students we've had come in, the needs of those students, a lot of them non-English, and sometimes a very foreign language, as in French, which we don't really get that often. But she's done a wonderful job, and is just a constant, constant worker. She works and she'll do everything she can for you. She does a phenomenal job with our students, phenomenal job with the counseling department, and I just wanted to highlight that, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
As Chris was saying about our positive behavior, one of the things that I do work closely on is discipline and working with students in the emotional support classroom. And I had the opportunity to spend some time this month. I made a deal, a little side deal with some of the students in the emotional support classroom, that if they had marked an improvement in their grades and very disciplined issues or referrals, that I would take them to lunch. So, I took six students to Blue Marsh Grill for lunch, and we had pizza, and it was absolutely amazing. And they were so well behaved, and they were so appreciative. I also, the following week, managed to, Lords and Ladies has a educational program, and some of our students want to go to BCTC but haven't made it into BCTC, and I don't want them to give up. And so, I took six girls from, again, the emotional support classroom to Lords and Ladies for the day, and it was absolutely amazing. And then, we went and had a bite to eat before we came back. But just to hear their excitement about planning for their future and the ability to think that far ahead, I had one student come to me and was like, "This is really something that I want to do because I don't want to have to worry about money when I'm older like I have to now." So, there were just some comments that they made during the tour that were just heart, you know, heartwarming. Also, ninth graders, they did their feedback field trips to colleges. So, we had students go to RAC, BTI, and Penn State Berks. And both Penn State Berks and BTI got back in touch with me, saying that they have never had students that were so respectful, that asked great questions, and that they were just so happy that they came for the day to be a part of their programs and see what they had to offer. So, it was a very busy February for us.
Good evening, everyone. So, for the middle school, I already touched on when I was speaking about Mrs. Hertz, go about the Shark Tank event, the seventh grade history. Our social studies students were able to participate in yesterday. I know that we, time is of the essence, and we did inevitably run out of time because the students were that involved in their project, in their sales pitch. Mr. Palmer, Mrs. Hester, you can attest that like, there was a lot of negotiating. Sometimes, we might need to work on negotiating a little bit. They were quick to just take the first deal they were offered, didn't even wait to hear some of the other offers. A lot of royalty talk out of Mr. Brown over there. But it was all in good fun, but lots of information learned and very, very hard quality work from the students. So, again, kudos to Mrs. Hertz. Also, in seventh grade, Mrs. Hamrick and Mrs. Joy are doing a poetry March Madness. So, there is a big bracket, like the basketball tournament, up across from my office in the middle school. And they are, every day, the students are reviewing two new poems, and they cross-reference a criteria and a rubric, looking at, and forgive me, Dr. Mella, because I'm probably gonna butcher some of this, but mood, meaning, language, and yeah, just your muscle. Certain components of poetry that I'm not gonna pretend to speak to, but they are, they are actively learning about poetry in a way that's timing, something that a lot of the kids can reference, which is the March Madness basketball tournament, whether it's the boys' or the girls' teams in college. So, I thought that was a really cool opportunity that Mrs. Joy's doing one, Mrs. Hamrick's doing one, and then, they're comparing both of them, and they're doing a large kind of overall bracket in the hallway for the kids to participate in and kind of see at the end of the day, what is the overall winning poem, based off of, again, that criteria that they're learning about in class. A few other small things, our eighth graders did have, some have an opportunity to apply to BCTC early for certain reasons, and Mrs. Erica Miller brought back some feedback from the interview team, and they, they had awesome things to say about the eighth graders that weren't given the opportunity to interview. They did an awesome job, and, you know, it is based on availability for those select students, but we do have high hopes for maybe a couple to hopefully get in. But there are few spots, and like over 100, 100 eighth graders, I believe, trying to get those spots. So, she's gonna keep me updated, but fingers crossed for those kiddos. I did have the pleasure of working with Josh McNeil from In Minds. He came in and was working in the middle school a little bit with me, just observing, checking out, you know, our students, how they're, how they're operating day-to-day, class changes, lunch, you know, those unstructured times, but then also the structured times in the classroom. And he went as far as to say, and I'm paraphrasing here, that he's, he's been in classrooms across the world, and we're up there with the best. So, I was very, very proud, and I shared that feedback with my staff today, that he was very happy to see that what we're doing as a staff is, you know, it's a, it's a reflection, what, what the students do, it's a reflection of what the staff is doing and the culture and climate that we've created in the middle school. So, very proud of all the kiddos and the staff. Last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about mini mini-thon coming up in April or middle thon, we're still kind of stuck on a name there, but the middle school will be hosting its own mini-thon to then, you know, raise more money on behalf of Tulsa Hop and Hare School District to give to such a great cause at Penn State. Thank you.
I thought I'd start out with a little update on our student leadership team. I met with them at the beginning of February, mid-February, and kind of talked about like our going into the end of year goals for our team. It's kind of crazy to think about, but what they wanted to do. And so, one of the things that they came up with was really wanting to help with the school garden. And so, I reached out to Ms. Wees, who's been working with Jill about, you know, the garden. And so, Ms. Wees got back to us and said she's gonna put her thinking cap on and think about how the student leadership team can help her with that as we go into the warmer months. And they also are very interested in starting to promote the student leadership team to our fifth graders, to try to set up a team so that they're ready to start, you know, ready to roll to the end of next year. So, that's really exciting. On February 21st... On February 21st, our school partnered with our PTO book fair to host a Penn Burnville family night. So in addition to the staff members, we already had helping with our PTO, which were several. And we also had a representative from Burnville Library. Ten of our staff helped organize, plan, and run stations throughout the evening, ultimately with the goal of creating connections between home and school. So each family received a goodie bag upon entry, which they filled up as they ventured to various activities. And thank you, Dr. Matla, for standing with me and greeting families as they came in. Ryan Forman, our art teacher, and Diana Herbin ran an activity during which students did art to various tempos of music. And then they shared information about the power of the arts on the brain and the nervous system, which was a, you know, big highlight of the evening. The kids loved that. Karen Bonner, our reading specialist, and Lacy Baxter, our librarian, ran a station all about exploring book genres and they shared bookmarks to take home that help guide questioning and discussion while reading. Nikki Carley, our math coach, Heidi Messner, our ESL teacher, and Becky Schlegel, one of our kindergarten teachers, offered make and take fact fluency games with playing cards and dice. And they were differentiated for all different ages, so they had their choice of different things. And then finally, Kylie Sanders, our coach, and Jen Engelbert offered a station in which families got a sneak peek of our hand structures team creation, but also the opportunity to explore robots that our students get to use in school. In total, we had sixty-nine families come out and join us. So it was an awesome event and it couldn't have been as successful without everyone to help, so.
That sounds like a broken record. What I wanted to thank Mrs. Horitzko as well for inviting me. I thought I was a shoo-in, knowing half of the students that presented, but obviously Mr. Lynch is doing a nice job because he got more business than I did, from even students that I had for an entire year and he's only had four, a little over half. So no hard feelings, but I just thought I had to say that. The next thing I want to talk about is like how like-minded we all are and how we truly are a family. So embracing our new math curriculum, I'm doing a book study with a large group of elementary teachers focusing on building thinking classrooms, specifically with math in mind. One of the things that is taught in that book is to kind of push the desks out of the way, get kids up and learning on non-permanent vertical surfaces. So I had an idea of how to do that utilizing hallway space, cafeteria space, and other spaces that we kind of overlook that students can use to work. Anytime I have an idea like that and I ask Mr. Shirk to come down and spitball with me of how I can make that happen, he's there at the drop of a hat. So I just wanted to thank him for the willingness to actually listen to me and, you know, agree to put a bunch of whiteboard in our hallways so that the students can get out of the classroom and get more exposure and spread out a little bit while working on complex math problems. So I wanted to thank him there. And the last thing was Read Across America Week we had last week. We had the author Kevin McCloskey come to Bethel. And one of the reasons why was Penn Burnville hosted him the previous year. He did such a nice job and I'm not a huge fan of getting all the kids in one space at one time. And he agreed to do four different presentations. So he had a primary, an intermediate, and then he was really kind of intimate with our kindergartens. He went into each kindergarten classroom and did a mini-presentation for each of them so everyone was actually engaged in what he was doing. His books were super interesting. He had a pigeon on his hat with something in the back of it. As you can imagine, a pigeon on your hat with toothpaste or something running down his back. But he's super engaging. He's been a Kutztown art teacher for thirty years at the university, very down-to-earth. Kids loved him, the staff really got involved. But again, to highlight Mr. Forman, who is Wednesday every time he hears his name. We got to walk Kevin down our hallways that were filled with artwork inspired by his books. So I'm going to send Dr. Netzner a couple pictures that I snapped today of each one of his books and a piece of artwork from numerous students that go with it. He highlighted like, that was the best thing he's seen. So like, I wear that as a badge of honor and I hats off to our art teacher.
Good evening. An area we're always looking to build on in special education is our transition services to prepare students with disabilities for life after school. Specifically, we look at the areas of employment, post-secondary education, and independent learning skills. To increase our capacity, we held individual teacher meetings for all of our middle school and high school teachers. During these meetings, I along with Caitlin, Erica Miller, our transition coordinator, and Colleen Rios, who's a consultant from the DCIU Professional Learning Office, met one-on-one with teachers to review our current practices and make sure that we are assessing students' skills, their strengths and interests, and align those with post-school goals and how we can use that information to provide appropriate learning opportunities. Mr. Palmer, as you pointed out earlier, we were really looking for students when they graduate to come out with a plan. So that's what we wanted to do, make sure that when our students are leaving here and they're leaving Tulpa-Hawken, they have a plan, they have a plan, they have a career path, and they're able to live and be independent. Some items to be focused on specifically are tools and activities that we can provide here in school to expose students to careers or fields they may not be aware of. We also identify opportunities to allow students to practice key skills through our working learning partnerships or authentic community-based instruction opportunities. These opportunities will all lead to students being independent and successful in their post-school goals.
Hello, everyone. Something that happened in January that I think I may have forgotten to mention was we started a share cart, the middle school, high school, and cafeteria. Last year, we put a share cart in each elementary school. Just to recap, that's for sealed things like a juice cup or a milk or, you know, a box or a package of cranberry raisins. Kids that took it decided they're not going to eat it, they can put it on the share cart and another student can pick it up if they're so hungry. So we got that rolling at the middle school, high school in January, the very end of January. And I was concerned that older kids would come up with all these ways to make it a negative and they didn't. So that was great, everything's been rolling smoothly with that. It is National School Breakfast Week, if you didn't know. So we are celebrating with an ad contest. Students, about twenty-five students submitted ads, advertisements to the two elementary schools. And yesterday I went around and took pictures of them all, they're hanging in the cafeterias. And we decided because we had about twenty-five kids submit, we're going to do like a small prize for each student and we're going to have a grand prize winner. I did pick out the grand prize winner, but we haven't let him know yet, but I will tell you a little bit about his ad. The first thing that shocked me is I said, "I'm looking at this advertisement and I see hairnet." He had labeled the hairnet on the cafeteria with his head and I'm like, "Wait a second, this thing's got a lot of detail." So I started to look at it. He had the share cart in the cafeteria. He had a bin where they recycle the plastic bags that they put their breakfast in. He had different food items, you know, identified in the cafeteria. He had a slogan. He also had a little jingle that he had written that just by looking at it, I could kind of understand what he was trying to go with there. And then he had two reasons why you should eat school breakfast. It was like, it energizes you and it decreases absenteeism, which were a couple facts that I shared with his kids. So it was neat to look at it in different aspects. It wasn't a coloring contest, so I didn't pick the kid that colored the pictures the best. I kind of looked at it, you know, as a, you know, where's the, what's the idea here? And this kid was looking away. Lastly, I wanted to give a little shout-out to Caitlin at Bethel and Sherry at PB. They're both going to be helping with kindergarten orientation, instead of the table for food services. And because of some conflicts, I can't be there the whole time and they're both more than willing to step in. And sometimes I think the questions that kindergarten parents have, sometimes the two of them are a little bit more skilled in answering those basic, "What happens if my child forgets to raise their hand at lunchtime time?" I would probably come up with something, but you know, what those kindergarten parents really, really need on the basic starting out school level. And that's everything I had for tonight.
Hi, everybody. Winter athletics, for the most part, ended several weeks ago. There are a few individuals that are still going, which I will get to in a few seconds. Yesterday, our spring sports started and as you can tell, mother nature is smiling on us once again through spring season. So lots of turf and indoor time for the majority of our teams. This is a big week for our musical department. It is Little Shop of Hardest Week, so Friday evening, Saturday, we will have three showings. Last but not least, I just mentioned this, in terms of shout-outs, I have to give shout-outs to two specific athletes of ours, Ms. Catalina Morelli and Mr. Jack Heckman. They are our first state wrestling qualifiers in thirty-five years. So it's been a long time since we had some Trojan grapplers make it to the Giant Center in Hershey Park. We had two in the past, eighty-eight and eighty-nine, and now we have two this year, which I think is absolutely fantastic. To highlight each one of them specifically, Kat is our lone female wrestler that we have and she has a legit chance to place in states. So I do expect her to be wrestling on Saturday in the medal rounds. Last year, prior to girls' wrestling being P.I.D.A., which sanctioned, she did place eighth in the state wrestling tournament for girls. And Jack Heckman, he's a sophomore, he already has over seventy wins, which is crazy to think about. The hundred-win club is something very special with wrestling. It's kind of like the thousand-point club in basketball. And next year, if he keeps up this rate, Jack is going to be a member of that club and hopefully continue to perform great at the state tournament this week. Thank you.
Good evening. I was also excited to have the chance to join the Shark Tank. I will say I'm still left scratching my head about one particular deal that I matched Mr. Palmer's exactly, except I offered a thousand more gems and I took his offer. Don't know why. And our updates in terms of our literacy and math committee, our math committee did not meet this month. We made all our big decisions last month. So moving forward, Dr. Burke and I are looking at the remaining goals that we have from the plan just to see if anything else really needs to be undertaken at this point. We are slightly ahead of schedule versus waiting until next year. But he has already taken the initiative to lay out our professional learning plan with illustrious math for this year and moving into next year, so that's all well underway. Our planned meeting for our literacy committee, the K to two section of our committee did meet with Magoris and me to start thinking about our K-12 phonics progression. The three to twelve group, which will be tackling writing, we had to postpone, we'll try and meet next week. We had several members who were sick and then a couple others who had personal commitments, so they weren't able to stay that day. Now, over the last month, I had a chance to spend a little bit more intentional time in classrooms at PB and at the high school. Mrs. Keeney was kind enough to let me come in and talk to her contemporary living class about writing resumes. And I've been collaborating with the fifth grade team at PB on incorporating some more authentic writing into one of the CKLA units. And in those opportunities, I got to spend a little bit more prolonged time with kids versus my usual just kind of stopping in for a couple minutes, seeing what's going on, interacting. I got to be there for a little bit more time in a chunk. And I walked away more impressed than I have been in just those quick visits. In Mrs. Keeney's classroom, I did a quick presentation, about five, ten minutes. And in that, I gave the students two sample resumes so they could see what worked well and what did not work well. We talked about it as a group. And then I went around to look at the samples that are the rough drafts that they had already produced. By the time I got to the first person, the majority of them had already started scribbling all over their rough draft about what they needed to change and what they wanted to work and rework. So I walked away impressed there. And then our fifth graders are working on writing their own children's adventure stories, having read Don Quixote. And as I talked to them as they were working, I was struck by when they were faced with the decision of how their characters were supposed to grow from the beginning to the end of the story. The sheer number of them that chose something close to either their character becoming more selfless by seeing the value in helping other people, or that they had a deeper appreciation for the importance and value of their family. And that goes right back to Mr. Beck's point earlier this evening. I just fit in with that Tulpa-Hawken moment of seeing how many of those fifth graders, totally unprompted on their own, arrived at that decision for their characters. And then lastly, a team from Governor Midland came to visit PB last week to see CKLA. They are currently exploring five different resources to see if they want to change what they're doing. So they spent the day with us, visiting with Mrs. Schlegel, Mrs. Kramer, Mrs. Fernandez, Mrs. Ravenold, and Mrs. Paul. They met with myself and with Lindsey, and then they had some informal conversation time at the end with those teachers. And I received two emails after the fact, one from Chris Kildre, who's their director of teaching and learning, and one from Heather Trebel, who's a community member here and a teacher at Midland. So I just wanted to share those quick words. So the first, Chris Kildre was, "Tim, I wanted to follow and send a sincere thank you for hosting my team today. Your time at hospitality is appreciated. My team was impressed with your teachers' passion and commitment to their students." And then from Heather Trebel, "Thank you again for the opportunity to visit PB yesterday. It was a wonderful visit, the students were well behaved, and you could see that the staff were genuinely striving to meet the needs of all their learners. I love your vision of motivating learners to be doers and intellectual risk-takers who find joy in reading, which could be seen in our visit. Thank you again for your time." So the fact that they were able to come in again as an outside group and to appreciate the things that our classroom teachers are doing, I just wanted to maybe share that.
Mr. Shirk, do you have anything?
Not too much to add, I just want a couple of quick shout-outs. Playground and dumb buildings, dumb kids are happy playing. There was some cleanup to do there, but overall, I prefer my little ice for the students to use.
You get all the little extra things that fix, then?
Yeah, so we wrapped that up last night, actually. Everything was glued, seems, looks much better than it did, so it's, yeah, we're very happy with it. It was pretty nice. Mr. Brown mentioned musical this weekend. Kids are doing a heck of a job, so looking forward to that show this weekend. And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to John here. We're currently working on a new scheduling system for all schedules throughout the whole district, act school and learn school, and he's put in a ton of time, performing, helping out tremendously with that. We're actually really close to rolling out, which I didn't think we'd be here already, so. Goodness, man. Thank you.
Dr. Hamrick?
Just two things capitalized off of math, but I wanted to just say thank you for your support on illustrious math. Next Friday, we're actually starting our professional learning to implement that program. But it aligns directly with a lot of the book study work, so we're excited about it. And it's why we're here. So we're going to start to, you know, follow that to make sure that we're prepared long enough. The other thing, just to put on the radar, that we'll come back to. You heard today about second grade at PB trialing a new science resource. So second grade at Bethel and PB, and then fifth grade at PB and sixth grade at Bethel are all trialing. That's aligned with the new standards in inquiry-based, you know, problem-based resource that has the kids doing an awful lot of really cool things. It's been in all the classrooms for science and the level of like actually doing and learning science has been phenomenal. Second grade got to dissect owl pellets at PB. It was a great one, I mean, they were finding full skulls, they thought it was the coolest thing in the world. We're doing that with Bethel tomorrow, second grade dissecting owl pellets. So it's fun to see the kids get their hands dirty and want to bring owl pellet around their home, which has been a lot of fun. So I've been using Title IV money right now to kind of fund that piece, but as that progresses and we want to grow that capacity, I just want to put it on the radar that we might be coming for some support so we can do that K to six.
New standards to K through twelve, or?
K to twelve, new standards. We are trialing this new resource at the middle level as well. High schools are a little different with the standards and they're more geared towards inquiry-based. So we're not too concerned about that, but elementary and middle school are trying to beef up the experiences.
Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
I'd just like to say a few things. Really happy to hear about the mini-thon. I knew a couple of years ago that almost went away. And I think that's such an important charity because when you raise money for that, all the money goes towards the kids that have cancer. So I think it's tremendous what you guys have done and the students and the teachers and everybody involved with that. That's a great cause. I was, it was a privilege to be in the class, I used to do Shark Tank with these guys. I had to bow out and I started doing Scrapple, Dorgery, but with Mr. Lynch, I don't like Scrapple that much. It was a lot of fun, it was, the kids are, some of them, kids I don't think I won a barter with when I told them. Pretty good. But, you know, it was a lot of fun and it was very... But, you know, it was a lot of fun and it was a very, very neat opportunity. Thank you.
I just think it's sightings, I think it's four seniors who are, have taken on the icon as their product. And what does it say, 14,000, eight? Is that what it is?
We're aiming for about, we had 26,000 last year, so around that. Forty would be awesome.
I was just, I, I thought 26 was a lot.
There was an email that came out looking for money. And I emailed back. I have not got a response yet. Was she looking for monetary?
I think, I think any support you can give. Without prizes.
You can give it to them.
You can give it to us if you can.
Is there a date you need to run?
The Easter kind is the 21st, so we probably sometime, probably say, Chris.
I got it. Before the next, yeah.
Does anybody have any new business?
Calendar events is listed there. Spring sports over. End of the third quarter, three quarters of the way there. Anyone wish to address the board this evening? So none of you will be having executive session for contractual and personnel afterwards. What do you got?
Thanks, sir.
All those in favor, it's up to saying aye.